You're closer.
What?
You're closer.
What do you want?
No, no. Okay, you can.
I got it.
Good.
Hey. Would it work?
No, it'll be done.
No, it'll have to work.
Yeah, I'll be done at the end of the day.
Are you all ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, last week when we were in session, we talked about having just a time to talk about the individual capital plans that are on here, and that's what you have on the front page. Now, not all of them are something that we're planning for next year. We often will put something on the plan, and it'll get pushed back and pushed back and pushed back, so it just means somebody wants it, and at some point in time, we will address it. So if you look at the first two items on the capital plan, you've got a new HVAC system and an elevator for the Haywood Street where the sheriff's offices are housed. That's major maintenance on HVAC. It's a 30-plus-year-old building, and it's just time to get that work done. It's never had an elevator, so it's not ADA compliant, and just we put the elevator in it. So those are pretty straightforward, major maintenance. The second one is replacing the elevator at the detention center. Believe it or not, that first tower is now 20 years old, and it's hard to believe. But, and it's used, it's very, very heavily used, so we need to replace an elevator in the first tower of the building.
Have they looked at the lead of the Haywood Street elevator? The chairlift, because chairlifts are like $14,000.
Oh, they would be a whole lot more. I don't know that they have. I'm happy to check with Greg on that and see what they've looked at. We also need to, we want to invest in it in a way that we don't want to sell that building, because we're going to be at capacity there for much longer.
Is there a church is too? There's a church there. Because this is back behind the building, I mean, this is in the back of that building. There's a church in front of that inn.
It's right across from Three Brothers, what used to be Three Brothers.
Does the church, like, owns French Broad, north means like diagonal, but the church might back up to make kind of sort of a...
Or Sheriff's Department isn't it? Turned in.
Well, you know, there's...
You go down the street, and you turn left to go there.
French Broad?
Whatever that road is.
Oh, that, that road?
At the old service station. Turn down there, and there's a church on the left. That's where this is, right?
Right there, I don't know. I don't know what church is, actually. It's just as you, if you're on the road before you can go on over to Chamber, we're on the other end of that bridge.
My only point is that if it's where I think it is, it's not much of a problem for the sheriff. It's an old CPML I built.
Yeah, it's built maybe four months ago.
But it is separate from that church.
Here's another church.
Oh, it's a little church. Not a church, it's a building. There's not, I think it's something else.
Yeah, because Carroll King's building is adjacent, and there's parking lots.
There's a lot of parking lots.
And Salvation Army is...
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, thanks. My geography lesson today.
And you can tell I'm navigational challenged. When I first came here, the guys used to say, "Now, you go north on this street." It's like, "Okay, I'm at Walmart." And then the third thing on the agenda is replacement for the detention center roof. You know, I said some of these projects will stay on here pretty good while until you get to the point where you really don't have any choice, but it's time. So the replacement of that roof has actually been on the capital plan for a number of years, which is, we have to get it done now before we have problems with it. So all of those, I would consider fairly major maintenance to care for the buildings and make sure that they, it's not like you can take a jail out and sell it, but if you can take an office building out and sell it if you ever need to replace it.
Is there certain rules as far as spreading that out for how long you can spread that out, whether it be depreciated asset or when it becomes a capital expense in relation to maintenance expense, which is just a dead hit, you know, like replacement of a roof?
Anything under a quarter of a million dollars, we consider a capital investment.
Is that an IRS rule, or is that...
No, that's just our policy. So if it's under a quarter million, we usually like, we may capitalize it anyhow under a quarter, we just don't consider financing above that. I think we might have a rule to capitalize at $10,000 or something like that on the fixed asset list. We would package all of these together to look at financing later in the fall. Greg is working now, Greg's real good at data estimates, so that we know exactly what these will be. Any questions about those three? Okay. Well, the next thing on the list is John's in the firing range. We got there quick, didn't we?
Yeah. Currently, we're in the design process of the shooting range, and I'm just going to show you where by now we're proposing to put the range. Just kind of worrying you, obviously, this is River Road, this is the training facility, Public Safety Training Facility. Right now, we've been waiting to start construction on the classroom building that is next door to the apparatus building, and what we're proposing is that the shooting range would go adjacent to the facility. It would have a separate entrance. Basically, let's just say that there's class going on, officers or whatever needs to go over and shoot. This is in use, you can't have people going back and forth across where you're driving. So what we're proposing is to put in a separate entrance, basically, it's on facility, there will be a connection that will connect to the training center, to the drive, but I don't think that's going to be the main, you know, we're testing area. So that's where it's proposed. Right now, we've looked at several different ranges. The sheriff really likes Winston-Salem, Forsyth County range. Pretty straightforward. The shooting range is a lot like an animal shelter. There's a lot of air turned over in the facility. Basically, you're recirculating about 75% of the air, and you're bringing in 25% air from the outside. Everything goes through HEFA filters, because obviously you've got lead in the facility. There's a 25-meter, 12-station range on one side, and then there's a 100-meter, 25-station range on the other side. So basically, you've got a short shooting range, and you've got a very long shooting range with a wall in the middle, and there's just lights, and at the end of it is a backstop. It's metal, it's a steel backstop that basically catches the bullets. There's an auger system that takes that lead and takes it outside, and then somebody comes by every so often and picks it up. Behind the shooting area is a wall, and then it's basically, there's a small classroom facility that will accommodate 40 people. There's two offices for staff, there's a break area, and there's a restroom facility that has showers in it. And then there's some storage area, and there's a lot of cooling, that's where your air handlers and staff is or on the side of the facility. It's pretty straightforward. It's basically like a big Kmart or whatever, it's just a slab-on-grade. It's a precast construction is what we're looking at. It's going to stand up the walls, put a roof on it. Construction of it should be fairly straightforward. It being in this area makes a landfill, it's like the classroom building and the apparatus building. It will have to have a liner system under it. We've talked to the state, and it's probably going to have to be an active liner. Basically, we're going to have some fans under it, because it is very close to solid waste. The advantage of it, obviously, is that, you know, we've got, we'll have everything together. I think that when it's all said and done, there'll be a complete facility at the location. Right now, indications are that we'll spend $10 million on this facility.
Can I ask, when did you, I guess maybe briefly, because this has been going on for a while, right? Can you just kind of outline, like, where you were when you started and how you ended up here? Because it's been a long process, right?
We, yeah, I mean, for, I'd say, the last six years of Billmore State, currently, the sheriff has had a facility out there. There was also a facility out, the city of Asheville had one next to the airport, which was in there. And the airport basically got the city to move. We've had run-ins back and forth with Billmore State saying, you know, you guys need to find another location. Pretty much the neighborhood has come on back. In the meantime, we started the Public Safety Training Facility. We discussed back and forth about whether it needed to go there or another location. Initially, it was thought that we could do an outdoor range. We looked at a piece of land out in Hominies. It's basically up in the National Forest. There was a, it's basically a parcel that's set in the National Forest, so you couldn't get any further away from people. It seemed like that the neighbors were supportive of it, and it had two trout streams on it. And the time we tried to lay it out, it just wouldn't work. And with my luck, when we got in there and got it graded, and we probably had the largest rainstorm we've ever had in the history of Bunton County, and I killed every trout from the head wall just to the front block. Didn't want to get in any of the situations. So we went back, and still the consensus was that we could do an outdoor range at this facility. We went to the town of Woodford, went through a community meeting, notified everybody within a mile, and what we found out was that, obviously, the people up on Goldview, the people in the neighborhood right there that was close, within a quarter mile, was concerned about the noise. Everybody else within a mile was concerned about either them or their child out in the front yard and getting hit by straight bullets. And even though that we had, we planned on 20-foot berms, I think everybody realized that there's no way that we were going to put an outdoor range in. I consider an outdoor range right next to, as far as siding, is Atlanta. Landfill's 10, and a shooting range is at 9. We also went highway to Vulcan Quarry, which was right down the street, within about three quarters of a mile, to talk to them about the possibility of going there. That was a lease situation, they were supportive of the idea, they're not supportive of an outdoor range, indoor range. There were some advantages there, the fact that we could save some money, just because of the liner system, and there, obviously, we've got to move a lot of dirt, you can tell by the orange colors there, we're making a pretty massive cut there. But you're separating your facilities away from each other, and there is something to be said about that, to keep them all together. So I am scheduled on the 20th to talk to the planning board in Woodford about an indoor range. This picture here is part of that presentation. What we've got to do is first give permission from Woodford before I can go to the state. I've got to go to the state and get our solid waste permit changed, simply because this is a permanent site for solid waste. And we did that same thing when we put in the Public Safety Training Facility. We had to make a change, so we've got to make, they won't even talk to us until we get it working so. So that's kind of where we are with the history. It's been a long process. It's one of those things where Billmore State's out there knocking, but, okay, it's not critical, but the louder the knock gets, the more critical, and, you know, I don't think that long-term we want to continue sending our officers to...
Gastonie.
Well, to Gastonie or even to Madison County. You know, officers don't go, they're not like, "Okay, the bus is going to be here fine." They drive their car down there, their squad car, and he drives his squad car down there. So all of a sudden, you've got 10 cars down. Of course, they work different shifts, they've got different duties, maybe call back in, does something, so it just doesn't really, just doesn't really work to be another location. So that's where we are. We're, we just finished 35% drawings, anticipate up into August that we'll be ready to, for the drawings that be put out to bid, whether I've gone through the approval process. I've been kind of put back or delayed some with Woodford, so I've got to jump that hurdle before I can turn around and go to the state and just roll the dice. I don't know how long that's going to take.
John, this is all on our property, the road and where the post sign is?
Everything is on Bunton County's property. We own everything. Canoe Road is the road that goes up to the prison, which is this, this road right here, River Road, so we own everything back here. This is a chipped tire disposal area, and this is part of the landfill waste right here we're called Hunter Hill where the tower is. So, yeah, this, this is the only really virgin area that's left. We've got a stream that goes down through here, and that's why we kind of did a jag or jug in the road to keep away from that stream.
What's the cost associated with the liner?
The liner is about $350,000.
So it's not an A B.
No, no, it's 1.1 million to grade the site, that cost associated with the site grading, but that, and that includes the road, parking lot, obviously, we paid the parking lot. It will be a gated facility, you'll have to have a card access to get in.
Do we have another site that we own, that the county owns, that is...
We did, I'd be there, but, I mean, obviously, there's...
Excuse me, on the bottom of site, I need to go look at it. 17 acres. I don't know how much a lease would be, if you had a building, but there's a whole lot more usable area for four-wheeling, you know, people that have to go on people in the woods and stuff. You have that, you have banking, that these people have to go down banks and drive people up, so it could be utilized more. I mean, if you're looking at the 10 million, but if you're looking at the medics can go use this place for, you know, if they have to go find somebody, search teams and stuff, and running four-wheeling down in these areas, it gives a whole lot more property. It's a big area where it's at. It's got a flat area already for a building, but that's like Craig said, you just got, it's two curves away from this site. You know, there's a, on the river there, the only thing that's really housing, but as he said, they don't want an open range. It could work as one, but at the bottom down here, sitting on the river is campers. So it's basically this road, used to be an old drive that cut up to go up to it, and they've got some drawings of that that they've done originally.
Could you say campers?
It's a campground.
Campground.
Right past, once you pass New Road, it's an A-frame, there's a A-frame house there that the guy used to run the engine handling.
And then he's got campers right down the river, so, and they wanted indoor because they wanted to be good neighbors, and, but it, you know, 17 acres is a little bit better than pulling a permit to put a bladder under a building, and then we can utilize it for fire, we can utilize it for different things, you know, forest fire people can. There's just some things that I don't know how you can fix it, where you can lease it to cover the lease on, but I feel like there's just more areas where we want to spend this much money without available to utilize it for more than just a indoor inch. I don't know. But the lay of the property is where people can actually get in there and practice finding people that are lost in the woods. So that's, you know, where I'm at, and I think the numbers wouldn't change a lot, would they, Craig?
No, like I said, there would be a savings in the liner, and there would be some savings in the grading cost, but we'd have to do a lot of work to get the road up there. That's one of the driving factors, driving factors there. I initially went out and looked at the site, and the sheriff was not really supportive in going to another location.
He likes the advantage of having everything there. So, that is, I mean, is that his big deal? A shooting range is a shooting range.
Yeah.
But I will say, I did talk to him a long time today, and I think that, obviously, for all the reasons, you know, that I think he understands that the budget decision is our decision, and the location is ours, so, I mean, I don't think that he's saying, "This is what we've got to have, this is what..." I mean, there are advantages to it, so, I mean, I feel like we just need to do our due diligence, and in terms of where I am, I mean, there's nothing that's been more aggravating than finding the land for this shooting range and finding downtown parking. When I was on the city of Asheville, and the neighbors were like, "Ah, that's just impossible." But anyway, so I get that there's not any other place, and outdoor, I think, we just need to say, "Let's just take that off the table." So we got to do indoor range someplace, and we don't have any property. So this, so for me, it's just a question of what is the difference between, the cost difference between this alternative and the public safety space? And then I, just in terms of stewardship of taxpayers' money, I'd like to know how much money that we are going to save, because I know we got to, we got to get off of Billmore, I understand that, I'm not delaying it, but in terms of kind of utilizing other spaces, how much of the, what is the annual cost that we are incurring for people to go to Edneyville and to go to Madison County? And I, I'm not saying that that's why I want to continue, but I feel like I need to know, or is this costing us another quarter of a million dollars each year, or is it costing us a million dollars each year? And when it starts in that bigger number, clearly, it makes sense to invest $10 million here, but I feel like I need to understand a little bit more about those dollars and cents before we, you know, to sign off on a $10 million shooting range.
Especially the one Edneyville's like a $4 million one. You know, and it's like if you're looking at, if you're looking at Wake County or Winston-Salem, is that where you're looking?
Well, I've been, I've been to both of them.
Okay. And you're looking at a million people population, so that means the officer are double, the deputies, they're probably double or more than what we are. And for building, is it 24 and 24?
It's 12 and 12.
12 and 12, okay. You know, for later on, I can see build that, but what were those that you were looking at down there?
They're the same. Winston said that they shot a million rounds last year, and it's strictly a county and city facility.
And Winston's the closest to us, because when I was doing, looking at those comparisons about emissions from the sheriff, the closest county that I could find, the closest city area, was Winston-Salem that would mirror us, so it's probably a reasonable comparison. Of course, I could speak to her point too, on the money that we're already spending. You know, I think it's important for people to understand that with this capital plan, that the key word here is plan. It's a plan. So that doesn't mean we're going to spend $30 million, doesn't mean we're going to spend $10 million, it means we're going to look at all these things and do the best thing for the county. So if there's $500,000 a year that's being spent to now, and this is going to be additional, additional debt, then we need to show the public that that $500,000 doesn't fall into black hole, that it actually saves us in maintenance or saves us somewhere else, okay? That that money comes back, and I think when you build something that replaces an existing function or service, that to your point, that the public has to understand that part of our stewardship is that we are going to recover that money somewhere and show them that we do. And then they're, for the most part, they're probably okay with us doing it in the best spot, even though that might be a little bit more, as long as they're getting that half million a year back, you know, somewhere else.
How, does that, or, when they practice, is it, are they, do they have to practice research, and how do they...
And once, I mean, obviously, a big advantage to an indoor facility is that at any given time, it can be day or night. You know, all they have to do, if it's 2:00 in the afternoon, which right now, and we need to do night training, that's when, flip the switch off, you know?
But there's one thing in there, because I've got a letter in there, these guys, your regular officers only train one time a year. You got a box of bullets, and they have to go shoot, and they have to score names, the only people. And I don't think, from what I understand from a lot of deputies, they're not going to spend the money of our bullets to go shoot themselves. The ones that have that is the SWAT team. Now, the SWAT team gets to utilize it a whole lot more than anyone else would be able to as your normal red deck is would be able to. And the deputy probably can tell us pretty quick that there's one, they have to qualify one time a year, and basically, that's when they go shoot. So is this big going to, are we going to justify having this big with it being staffed in open 24 hours? Same process.
One of the things we need to say too, is this is a facility we will share with the city of Asheville and other municipalities.
Yeah, the city, Judge Richardson was telling me, the city trained 230 days last year. They, they get more than a box of bullets.
Well, how long this shooting thing, they may have to qualify once a year. I don't know what law enforcement does, I can tell you as a shooter, qualifying and being proficient are not the same thing. You have to shoot a lot to be proficient. And also, long into a couple of different gun clubs in the area, issue of lead, a basement there, reclamation of that, that's a huge deal. You mentioned the side open, Candler, I belong to the Bunton County Wildlife Club, but we have a stream on that property out there. We cannot drop lead in that stream. I mean, that's like a no-no. And at some point, we build a little, especially in open range, but I think we pretty well decided on an indoor, at some point, Deener will come in and get all over it. Down the road somewhere, all shooting ranges will come under that, because there'll be pressure about lead. I know even at the Bunton County Wildlife Club, we've got somebody coming in this year to do a lead reclamation, and that's different, that's all shotguns out there, so that's pellets. But still, you have this lead reclamation issue, and you have, I think, down the road, there'll be some pressure, and the system is starting to also, leads, I don't know, depending on how much lead you drop, it can be a nice little funding thing as well.
But I think in terms of the capital plan, I'm comfortable going forward with this number, just knowing that we're going to work on bringing it down. I mean, where I would want to get to is like, is it the right, whatever we build, whatever we build, and let's just assume it's going to be this, because I think that's where it makes the most sense probably, but that we are, we're building it to the right scale, that it isn't, you know, more than we need, or, but it is, but there's a little bit of capacity to grow, but it's not like, I mean, it's hard selling a $10 million shooting range.
For not much.
Yeah. So at least, we need to be able to justify it at the scale that fits our community, and that we'll just look for where we can save money. And I do think that if we had that type of, those types of numbers to kind of share with the taxpayers, that this is, this is why this investment makes sense, that would, that would help too. And there would be offsets, right? I mean, if we're having to...
We'd have a lot less.
Yeah, which means they would, they would be, because now, they would be, I was talking to Van, he said, it's a difference of maybe being off of your beat, he didn't use the word beat though, what did he use? Anyway, shift, an hour and a half or two hours here, as opposed to driving somewhere, and you're talking almost, you know, just a lot more time that you're not, so you're having to do overtime, and you're, it's just, it's more expensive to the operational budget, so I'd love to know those, know that number.
So and do those numbers, if we, if we pull, let's say, half million, will that, half million dollars pull out of the sheriff's budget, and can that, I mean, can that move over to justify safe schools, you know, or whatever? I mean, can that be shown to the, to the stakeholders, to the public, be shown to them, so that they, it doesn't make it such a heavy lift if they know that that money's coming out?
Well, I think there's a couple of things. One, the overtime would definitely be impacted. The comp time would be too, which is avoidant cost, really. The travel cost, because a lot of more in county cars, you've got to figure the mileage, the gas, everything, so that takes a little longer to figure. The off-road time is, it's a double whammy, because you've got to pay somebody beyond the, on the shift, and you've got to pay them while they're training, so that's probably the biggest savings.
It can add up really, really quickly. Yeah, it really can.
Those become avoidable, the overtime, the travel. Those become avoidable, the time, the travel.
Is this proposal, or would this be available to non-safety officers to use?
Like, could David and I go out and practice?
It's not gonna be open.
Let us know.
Individuals could use.
It's just, I think, Wake County's the only, only one in the state that does that. And the liability of somebody getting shot, and there's more, if you're gonna let the public in, there's more of expense, because, okay, let's just say we're all sworn officers, we can all stand here and shoot. Now, if we don't wanna all be in line, if we all got together and got a gun and just started shooting, I mean, you know, you have dividers, and there is an expense to have the public involved, plus, you gotta have somebody that's gotta run that portion of it.
Have you done the math on that, though? Pardon? Have you done the math on that? Have you looked at foresight and seen if they're creating revenue streams?
They're, I mean, Wake is the only one that's, and they farm it out. It's strictly, it's, you know, and I don't know what, it's just...
Check it out, because I mean, you can put it with a blowjob for a... Because if the taxpayers wanna get stuck with ten million dollars, the taxpayer might wanna use it one day at least.
I understand. It's just a liability here.
And the thing that we also have to remember is this is setting on property that while we own it, is really controlled by Deener, they may decide that public can't be on it.
That's true.
Honestly, yeah, that's the only reason that we got the public safety training facility there, was that this, this is not gonna be for John Doe and everybody to come out and wander around, this is all gonna be...
I agree with that.
You know.
I've never understood, and I'm gonna keep on asking it, maybe one day I'll understand it. So like, is there an opportunity for, I mean, the public safety in general, for other entities to pay us to utilize, you know, whatever, the burn thing or the...
I thought they did the fast racetrack, so, but Eric's out there.
It's really, it's all funded through AB Tech. AB Tech gets reimbursed for all the classes, so it's...
Really?
Yeah. I mean, if Allen Bar goes out there, or the city of Asheville goes out there and does a training, they do it for free, but then AB Tech gets reimbursed from the state.
But if you answer the county...
They can give you an education, or AB Tech finances state money for their BLT or for their recertification, and it's fire EMS.
Did anybody change?
So all the training has to come under some type of very strict, it's not like, we got a rookie class coming in, can we teach them to shoot?
No, it's all, it's all connected to the community college, and it's continuing education that's required.
And it's all free.
And it's all free to the individual, but AB Tech draws down state funds to support it. That's what we were talking about, is trying to isolate that.
And it was like, when we started, okay, budget time for this facility, it's like, okay, guys, we need some revenue, and this person was real quick to tell me, well, we're not paying anything, because, you know, we get our services for free, AB Tech gets reimbursed for that, but...
You know, per student, per head fee, and then we would've covered through the capital, which is what one and I were talking about, the cleanup of the indoor range and the maintenance, which do not work so well, at AB Tech, but those are costs too.
But AB Tech will never...
You're currently paying a different...
Yeah, I mean, they, at the training facility, they've spent probably four hundred thousand dollars just in equipment, bringing in whether it's hoses, ladders, cones...
So they have a skin game?
Yeah, yeah, it's not that, okay, it's a county, but, I mean, they copy, they pay for the paper and the copy machine, the wheel on the copier.
So let me get this straight. So if you are a public safety officer, for whoever, training is, in our great state of North Carolina, which I'm liking this, is free, and the state reimburses, the state says, "We, we care about public safety, and we are gonna invest in everybody equally, and we will reimburse for wherever your folks go to do."
Especially if you're going through the community college, like BLT or any of those things.
Kind of the same way it works for GED or any continuing education, is it's part of the state allocation to community colleges, and community colleges are, earn their state money based on headcount enrollment.
And believe me, we bonded with that very carefully, we have Eric out there, can you fire up that, that building? You can burn through a lot of gas fat, so we always make sure it's being done under AB Tech's, talking to somebody outside.
So how do you determine on something like this? Seems like the line's a little blurred on whether it can be a county asset or a community college asset.
Well, the asset has to belong to the county. We own the land, we have to own the building that's on it, but the community college can operate all the programming around it, and we have...
Just like another classroom?
Yeah, just an expand, yeah, that's a good way, but it's just a big expanded classroom for all the programs, paramedics, BLT, fire, they'll all be out there. And they've all been part of designing the complex, and we'll talk many about the classroom buildings that's on the complex too.
Okay, the other thing about the classroom building, so wait, is this, is there any chance of combined, even chance of having a wing off of a shooting range as a classroom? Because you're limiting one wall, of course, the site's probably painted, because that, you're taking, basically taking top mountain off.
The way you're doing is, the only way you would have to take a, you'd have to, you know, look at that, yeah.
A note's fine, you did with the note.
Yeah, I mean, just, just take that red building there, try to set, try to set it down over here someplace without interfering with the trap.
I'm talking about taking the little building over there.
Oh, there?
Yeah, I'm not talking about taking the big building, I'm talking about taking the little building over there.
Just...
You know, one thing lessons learned from him lot, do that, and I know we're building it to specs and hope we never have lead issues, if you move a classroom over there, you expose more people to prolonged exposure.
I'm good with that.
In one lawsuit, we'll eat up and hold it, and then follow them.
So, so we're gonna get some more, as we get closer, but I'm hearing you gotta go get the permit from the people.
What do you think, someone's got your permit from?
One eighty or our soul, we're not sure which.
A hundred and eighty.
You know, you know, we gotta figure out the savings, and then the other revenue stream that comes to this, and then, I mean, you know, this money that's going to AB Tech, I mean, when we wash all this together, as long as that money don't go in a black hole again, I mean, if we wash all that together, I mean, it might not be so expensive.
Well, and our, our cost will be capital cost, our savings will come in our public safety areas, AB Tech's already paying the expenses, so that, that's already being realized in some places. But I do think our big benefit is the travel time, the overtime we're paying, and wear and tear on car.
And that can go somewhere else, and that can come out of the sheriff's area, and come over into the safety school, whatever.
But I do hear real clearly, y'all want some cost savings, you wanna know the cost savings of my way or my way.
Yeah, I just wanna be able to look at, you know, taxpayers in the face and say, "We asked these questions, up one side, down the other, look every inch of this county, this is, I can justify, this is what we need, this is why we need it, and this is what it costs." I'm good. I mean, and in some ways, this is, this is like the least public nightmare of all, I mean, we've got like a dedicated space for public facility, and it's gonna be indoor, I mean, that's a good thing, that's a good, it's a really, really good option, but I just have, you know how I am, I gotta feel like I can answer those questions to people.
Well, you gotta show them a return on them, even if, but Holly, what if he comes back, and as they said, he's gotta go to Woodford, he's gotta go to Deener, go to Riley, we have these problems, don't, don't y'all think we ought to look at the Valdo site to, oh, do them that way, it's outside, I think it's outside of district.
It's outside, still, it's a conditional use.
I don't think, I think everything should be...
Is the problem a bit ironic for the other place?
You know, I don't know, I couldn't definitely say yes or no, but I don't think so. I don't think that, we need internet connection, I don't think we need a life or death, I mean, this is not, we're not moving nine-one-one out there. My feeling is, if you can get on the internet, you can control the lights off your iPad or the whatever, the targets that you're shooting at, and if that goes down, then, you know, there's always a way to go over here and flip the switch or the brake. So I don't, I don't see us having, it's not critical that we have a hard wire. You can see, I know that from the Valdo site, you can see spy, you can see that in the world. So, you know, we've got a, we've got a very large tower that sits next door to this facility, we already have a connection at the Aberdavon building, and obviously, where I have something to find.
We do at some point, we've had the discussion about having other counties in the state be able to use it, but at a cost, we just have not gotten that, our folks are using it. I think I sent out statistics one time, and I haven't noticed that from John, that the use on that facility already is turned in.
It's awesome, yeah. I mean, that's what you want, like, you're investing taxpayers' money, you want it to be utilized, and what better use than, you know, training our public safety, I'm happy about that.
I mean, I could pull, I can pull the camera up, and I've never pulled it up that somebody's not out there doing something. There's, they're either climbing, or there's vehicles, or they're going up and down.
Well, I don't think if it's easy to do something, then we're likely people are gonna practice it. I mean, right, yeah.
No, it's good.
Yeah, and the AB Tech that you're talking about, they're still, we're still trying to clean that one up, that's still...
They've got classes in their name.
Do they? I know it was expensive.
Two point three million dollars.
Yeah, it wasn't cheap to fix that up.
Two point three million dollar cleanup.
And that's with us encying all the testing, all the employees and all the employees' families. You get lead on you, you gotta test everywhere you ever were and everywhere you ever touched.
And at the time that started, it was compliant with all the rules, it just wasn't a, a end.
Something wrong with somebody, something...
And it was too late.
Curtain into the, on the curtain or something, and it blew its head.
Something.
They replaced the backstop, and weather's continuing, legal issues about who's responsible for that, it appears to be around the back.
And given that issue, given the fact that this is gonna be contained, it's gonna have good air exchange, it's gonna be lead reclamation, I would take one lawsuit, and the ten million dollars or any savings there smaller is gone, so.
Yeah, that's, you know, the hemp system in here is, is very expensive, but, I mean, that's something that definitely wouldn't sell well, let's cut that off. We save three hundred thousand dollars on that.
Mike, and I appreciate you holding up on the lawyer, Judge, we felt it coming. Thank you.
Well, I tell you what I like, is I, I like what we're doing here, is, you know, when people read the capital plan, or they see the capital plan, they flip the newspaper up, and they see, you know, no offense, Mark, but they see ten million or thirty million or whatever, they think that's an automatic deal, we're just going out there and spending that money, getting together like this, making all this information transparent, you know, and showing them a return on their investment, to me, is, is what we have to do. And like Holly, I wanna be able to explain that when I'm out on the street, and I do want to stay, have the most efficient pest available for the county, but, you know, we gotta be able to prove that it makes sense, every dollar, not every million dollars, every dollar.
Well, and I, and I think one of the things with Bunkin County, we do do things better, and I'm not comparing the, all this to the animal shelter, but it is kind of like that, in that it's all above, people emulate what we do, and, you know, Jerry Vehan said to me yesterday, he said, "Why do these other counties have so many problems with overpopulation of animals?" And it's because we've always been ahead of the game and not behind it, and this is absurd.
I will tell you, our public safety people aren't so very pleased with the convenience, the quality of the asset that they have now.
Well, the reality is...
The trains are...
The reality is that some people don't have enough training, and they've missed, I mean, really.
I really do like to know that when I call nine-one-one, one of them's gonna be there in a hurry and know what they're gonna do. And I do think that's what the general public really, they depend on that.
They expect them to be there, and all they expect from us is to be good.
So...
We can do that.
So like, people that, like when the president comes, the people that are on the roof with the big guns and stuff, they would practice there and everything.
I love, I love that it's technical.
The big guns.
I know what a big gun is. Because they had them in Marlin County years ago, just played in the bright room, and called mine game. They were spayed up there, they had machine guns on courthouse in Marlin, that's called Bloody Marlin. I hate to digress, but we need to move on, I think they missed our acting checks.
I was really bummed out, I was really getting...
They were trying to check, so maybe we'll get a reschedule, that's what they said.
While we're at the facility, before we move off the, that spot, let's talk just a minute about the classroom building. That is gonna be paid for with AB Tech, a quarter cent sales tax money, would you wanna give them the size of current state?
Building's designed, in fact, it's been bid out, and we've accepted a reward and contract at the end of April. It's a little over thirty thousand square feet, it'll be a fourteen month building process, bigger construction, it's a little bitter on the job. I tell you, the facility is being well used now, I can't imagine what it's gonna be like once we leave the classroom as a part of it. The limits that we have now are obviously classroom space, because what Eric does is he, the classroom that's in the back has ability to be split in half, we have a small classroom, it's about the size of this conference room here, and then he also uses the bay. When I was out there a couple of weeks ago, there was a class going on in one of the bays there. So that's, that's a real key, is that when that comes about, it's...
Did Jay come in more than the seven million?
Well, it's a seven million dollar budget, the bid came in at five million, seven hundred and, I don't know, I think it was eighty-six thousand dollars.
That seems so much.
But there's soft costs, no, there's soft costs and site crap that goes with it.
Yeah, so you, I mean, I've gotta pay an architect, I've gotta pay testing, there's all sorts of soft costs.
I'm talking housing and land and...
Yeah, but, but, you know, we're well within budget.
But all these numbers are pretty good moving targets, you know, it's not...
They, they move until we've borrowed the money, then...
Yeah, but we have a solid bid from the contractor, we've got a site that's prepared, it's not like we're starting up there, and this is all been, you know, we've got good soil and those kind of things, so there shouldn't be any, you know, big surprises. So, it's exciting, I mean, it's, it's definitely, like I said, one of the missing wings that is sitting out.
Give me just a second, I'm gonna pass out these books. I was talking to Paul yesterday, and they brought me the updated proposals on, I was at Dixon Elementary School. If you'll recall, when we first had, you can go take a, a look, and we'd expect the estimate to be around, was estimated around sixteen million, they came back at nineteen, and now they're back at twenty point two, which was a bit of a surprise.
They went up?
Yeah, they went up.
But it's not really, this was, this was an external person, so, yeah, this is somebody, we were trying to get like a third party to look at eyes on it, so...
And this is the third party up.
This is the art, the art of it.
Different, yeah, this is a third, yeah, value engineer looked at, because we were like, really, these are the right numbers, and so we said, "Get somebody else to look at it." So this is not, this is not the person that's proposing, this is not ledgers.
It's not ledgers, it's letterhead when you get here, but actually, what I noticed later, whoops, this is the group that actually did the CM at Risk work, so it, they, they own the work.
Right.
So a couple of things, I think we need to talk our way through, and look at your second page here, when you look at how we're gonna pay for the two city schools, from the get-go, it's been how, how and when do we have capacity in our debt schedule? I mean, we paid off some, some amount, the difference between what we're still paying and what we paid off, that becomes what I call capacity. So we talked about doing the middle school, and we would, during the period of the bill, we do something called capitalized interest, which means we borrow enough money to pay the first payment, and we don't start making payments until the building is actually ready to occupy. Pretty con... Pretty common way you do things, if you had to be really flush with cash, you probably wouldn't do that, but, um, we've done all of our big buildings that way.
Say that again.
It's like Ashley furniture.
Yeah, it's, it's a capitalized interest, which means if the building's, uh, gonna be at 20.2 million, the whole con, the whole project is, 'cause there's been, maybe pieces of this one, then we would figure how much interest would have to be paid, um, on the time period of the construction, that's a year, that's one of the things. And then we borrow the extra money to make that. Okay. So that way you're paying, um, your first payment out of what you've borrowed.
So when you put annual debt capacity, that's that number?
No, annual debt capacity just means we've paid off that much debt. Uh, we, you know, if you look between, um, 16 and 17, we will have paid off, you know, additional money so that we've got, got additional capacity, so. Uh, and, uh, you'll see one on, on there because when we talk about the Culture and Recreation Authority, we would move the cost for all of those things to the authority, so that gave us a little more capacity here. So, two things happen here, and there's the middle schools, I think we have to address them at the same time. It's a matter of which one do you want first? And given that they are estimating the middle school coming in at 41 and a half, um, we can actually by the end of the calendar year be working on Isaac Dixon. And we would, we would then start debt payments on them in cal- calendar year, or fiscal year 15, probably later in the year. If the cost that we have in here holds, we would not then be able to build a middle school to 2018.
And there's nothing in the, is it 13, 14 budget that we're doing, there's no cost associated with these at all?
Not at all, but there's commitment. And once you're committed, you're, you're gonna have to pay it in years beyond that.
Once you're committed to?
Once you're committed to the debt. Yeah, so once, once we say we're gonna build this, we'll start through the process and we will borrow money and it just matters now when does the debt debt payment start? So we have to look years forward. So, I think one of the questions comes up then, do you wanna build the middle school first? So if you look at the second page, you could actually build the middle school and make your first payment in 2016, but that puts the elementary school off to 2019. It's hard choices that we need to make. When, when we met with, um, the Chair of the Board and Superintendent and the Vice Chair, they really were all very much ready to do the elementary school. That's, that's what they say, is ready first, they're still probably a year away from truly being ready for the middle school. And what we're hearing from all of them is they would like to go ahead with the elementary school. The price is a little higher than we expected, uh, which means we just have to push the, uh, the middle school that's put back a year or so. I run these both ways so that, I mean, I'll let you got some rev numbers where we're, there's, in the scheme of borrowing millions of dollars, but being a million off one year is not, uh, is not as hard to find in the debt schedule.
So, so in terms of, the thing that changed was we went from, please, the two, this is the difference.
Yeah, the, the difference is there is, if, if you look at the first one, you can see. This, if we go with Isaac Dixon first, so we can build it and start paying in 2015, then we just can do the middle school out here. Uh, but if we, if the middle school first here, we're gonna build a hell of a place to build that.
Elementary school, so you're looking at.
We start the middle school, it's 2016 if it goes first, and then elementary follows in 2019, vice versa. We can, uh, start the middle school within the year and, um, then the, the middle school, did I say that right? Elementary school we start within the year and then, uh, middle school we can start in 2018. We can actually start it.
Yeah, I think you left Isaac Dixon.
Did I say eleme- okay.
Who, um, once we go ahead, if we go ahead, who's in charge of, um, these buildings? I mean, are we gonna get into another situation like we have at ABTEC?
No, I, I don't think so. I don't know from, I mean, with middle schools, we know who runs their projects and, uh, there is, um, we thought the Superintendent was gonna oversee this and I don't know how fast they replace him and they don't have anybody else on site, they'll have to hire somebody to oversee the project. And you gotta ask, are they in the search process for Superintendent? I just don't know.
I'm sure they're starting it. Yeah, I mean, I kinda hope we don't get too far from that in terms of this decision, but I don't know.
Well, I think it's not a question because we need to know who's gonna be in charge.
In charge of the construction part or construction process?
The whole, the whole process. I mean, you know, everybody's supportive of a new school, but maybe it's a question of timing, I mean, would we invest?
But I wouldn't think that the Superintendent would have been in charge with the construction project even if, I mean, whoever's there, that person's not.
This Superintendent's been leading the charge so far and my question is, if we were gonna invest 20 million or 47 million in a company and they just had a change in the director, would we be discard launch with this money? I mean, I'm very supportive of this, but I don't wanna get into a situation six months down the road like we have at other places. I mean, are we able to have any oversight? I mean, what?
Traditionally, we have not had oversight over the K12s. We'll end up having to own them because of the, uh, just the borrowing, but that's just a matter of the deed. They have one facility first of, I wish I could remember its name, I can't, but I'm fairly certain they'll have to contract for, for construction management.
So the county uses Tim Farrell. It's, he's, county schools.
His architect is.
He's the head guy there. And so they just oversee through him and once the designs made, of course, this Thursday we're, you know, they've been talking about intermediate school for Anka, which, you know, Dave and I have been, have talked about from the beginning along with the, with these schools, my commitment to, to schools. So I think it's a valid point on who's going to run it and does it end up like something that we were in to yesterday, ABTEC. The ultimate goal would be to build them in the most cost-efficient way possible to provide the needs for the children, I would think. And I, I've never been involved with the city schools, so I don't know how that works. I really don't know how they do it.
This is the first time in my career here that they've built a new school, they, they have renovated, seriously renovated Claxton and they oversaw, it's been a long time ago, but we weren't involved in, in that renovation, so, um, and you could, you could.
I mean, it's not, I mean, it's not the best analogy, but, you know, the, the truth of the matter is that nobody, not Tony Baldwin or anybody oversees construction. I mean, it's just, they're two bigger, they're two bigger projects and so they'll hire somebody, they'll hire somebody that will oversee it all, so, um, and I think we need to have a good planned place to have accountability to it, but, um, I, I feel, I feel fine about that facet of it going forward, 'cause I never really saw Allen with a hard hat down there, you know, overseeing stuff anyway, but.
I think I'm gonna pay this for money for the school. Or above, while we work on the, the middle schools in the county. About 3 million. And we're 35, 40 million, we can build 70,000 square feet of classroom space at ABTEC. So, you know, I don't think that even in the middle school, they don't have that much.
I think for the next, uh, intermediate school, they are projecting 25 million in the county. They, they are, they are projecting 25 million for the next intermediate school in the county.
For Anka.
Yes.
Both these sites have demolition and remedial.
And that's a big factor.
That's.
There's some remediation on this side too.
So in terms of kind of understanding the new value for, because basically the numbers, but this is, did we get the middle school too on this?
No, they're probably really close to a year away from having all that together.
Okay. So in terms of apples to apples, the, the cost, the, the total cost for the building went to 17,4.
It's a sum, right?
And what was it before that?
In total, it was 19 million before. Uh, I didn't look at the breakdown.
So there's, so in addition to, there's, 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 how do, okay, just trying to get to where we.
What's the difference, Holly, in the view of this, not the, the 3 million difference there that?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out.
The development and demolition on this one is, and they've got some soil issues, it's pretty steep.
That's hard cost.
That, that is hard cost and they'll have to do the bill.
Wasn't there also a, a way of looking at building at the side of it or something? Another piece property aside if it's possibly available?
We did have a contractor.
You wouldn't have to move stuff over that other school? I apologize to Cameron.
Randall.
Uh, I know a contractor did talk to the Superintendent about that and they determined that that was not enough land to build.
So the difference went from 19 million to 20.2, is that what you're saying? Okay. And so the million two is what's kind of gotten this whole thing off, off the filter from where we?
Well, for me, it's the combination of the fact that, uh, they don't expect to be able to get the middle school down, so it's a timing issue. Timing on, uh, the elementary school, I don't think it's so much impacted by it, but it does push the, the middle school back a couple of years, so. So what I really just need to know is, are, since we wanna do both, are we okay with that gap from elementary to middle starting? Because I know there were some of you who really wanted to make sure the middle school was done.
Absolutely. So the idea would be that, is this, is this a possibility? If the middle school number were to be able to come down, then that would bump up a potential start date. So the, the, this, the construction date's been pushed out because of the, the idea that it's still at a 46.5 or whatever, 46.9 or whatever that final number is.
Where, uh, we brought it out down to 41.5, uh, based on what Allen's, Allen's saying on the middle school.
And what did we have it before?
They started at 47, but we, we'd asked them to bring it down to 40.
So, so, so we, so all this has gotten off because it's a 1.2 million additional for Dixon and a 1.5 additional for, 'cause I'm, I'm just trying to figure out like, what changed in the last?
Couple of things changed.
48 hours, yeah.
Um, we had thought they'd bring Dixon in at a, at, um, 18 million. And we thought they would bring the middle school in at 40.
Right.
So that's the gap that we've got.
Right.
And what that makes is a timing gap, more than anything else.
Right.
And what I really need, really need to know is, are we ready to move on with the elementary school? And I talked to Commissioner Newman, uh, who, who is traveling, will be here for the 4:30 meeting. And he asked me to look at a couple of other revenue sources to see if I couldn't find something that would help pull that middle school up a little bit, uh, and particularly look at, do they have capacity in their current supplemental tax, not adding to, do they have some capacity in their current supplemental tax? Haven't had a chance to look at that today, but I will, I will get to that, uh, because that would pull it back up too.
Is there not a way to build that middle school for this money so we can move it up? I mean, is there not a possibility of building a $30 million middle school?
They have not been able to come back with that. I mean, they, they say that they can't. We didn't, I didn't everything think come back at 30. We did ask them to come, see if they could come in under 40.
Is the reason you didn't think they could come back at 30 because they were at 47?
No, it's because they're landlocked, uh, over there and they, they've got, and that's a big building to demolish.
Being landlocked, they did.
Yeah, and, uh, so you're gonna build on site and then you're gonna take all of that down. I, I just didn't think they could come back at 30. Well, certainly hopeful they come back under 40.
The, the most expensive schools we've built have been around 25, but those would be on build and pick a piece of property and build.
Yes, if it, when you can go pick a piece of vacant land and build, it's, it's much easier, much, much.
Yeah, because it seems like your quarter of the money for fixing this, um, the land problems.
They did have some land issues over there. And they have, between the demolition and remediation, they've got some issues there. And they also have to do some upsetting of Randolph to go ahead and move the students for the temporary space and then be able to come back to the new school.
Have they found a place for the Randolph kids yet?
They have. I am sorry, Alan told me, but it's been about three weeks since he told me, so I can't remember. But they do have a place to move them. We're getting a lot of questions while we're rolling over when we do work. Getting a lot of questions from the Dixon parents to understand how the process works. So I tried to explain some of that to a couple of them today. Like any construction project, you make your best guess on what it's gonna cost. You have to go out and get your bids, like we got the bids on the classroom building and now we know pretty certainly what that, that's gonna cost. And once you have the bids, then you can start the, the process of borrowing the money. But often you see a reimbursement resolution on the agenda, because before, if we're going to pay for all of it with borrowed money, there's just an IRS requirement that we do a reimbursement resolution. So they were asking me how fast we can do that. Realistically, if you pass the budget on the 25th of June, probably the first Tuesday in August is as soon as you can do that for the reimbursement resolution. But getting it bid, uh, having everything in place, that's gonna be a several month process in order to get all of that done. So at best, you're, you're probably gonna look after the new, the new calendar year begins before any earth starts to move. Or it may be that the students don't move to the relocation until mid-year. And I think that's got parents confused a little bit too.
So it would have made sense to start Dixon when we could and then there's some leeway to come up with good ways for the middle school, but get Dixon started?
I think that's what the school system and the parents both want is to go ahead and get started on Dixon, the work's done, the prices are.
Had you listened to both schools and not known either one of them at all? I just send immediate, immediate Dixon. Just felt like you had a greater need, you know, from a condition standpoint. And, uh, there's nobody on this board more committed to schools and children than I am. I'm thankful that the whole board as a whole is committed that way and we all think in that, in that direction. But just from an opinion standpoint, when I visited, that's the way I felt when I left. Normally, I move on that.
Yeah, I was horrified at Dixon, I thought it was horrible. Have you been there lately?
No, I haven't, it's probably been a year and a half.
The sheriff's office is late. Well, if you go, and I made this, I made this one before, it's not, if you go to his elementary, build in 1951, Isaac Dixon built in 54, and you look at differences in the two schools, there's a big difference. I don't know why, but it just is. And, uh, and I think it's convenient there for that school and for those kids. We need to figure out a way to do it in a cost-efficient way. And I, I don't think, I think we have to be, uh, careful that when you challenge dollars, no one ever needs to think that you're challenging the need.
It's like looking at the firing range, just asking all those same questions.
I, I do think that when you get these schools rebuilt, they're going to be much more energy efficient, so you're gonna have some natural savings from those things too. And if we, uh, if we were able to use the savings at Dixon to help offset the cost as we start the middle school, I think that would be very, very helpful.
Yeah, I'd like to see us go with Dixon, like you said, 'cause I, I think another part of this, this has been a decades-old problem and I think we just gotta, gotta bite bullet and get going. And if the school board says that's the need, let's say go. I do wanna move, I hope we could move middle school up through savings and through other things, but they're gonna have to come in cheaper. It's just the way it is. I think there's gonna have to.
Well, I mean, I haven't talked to people that's got kids in, um, the middle school and they said there's nothing wrong with it, you can remodel it, the building's structural same. If you wanna remodel, it's better than, you know.
Well, I think they've tried that over the years. I think they've, they've tried to do a lot of bestists and this is.
They said, oh, that's a good school.
What we need to do is leave the middle school though on, on the plan with a reasonable rate on it, so that they, because they are gonna be asking, you know.
Yeah, I think that's good, I think that's all smart, I think everybody's words is the, is the right way forward and including, you know, Newman who's not here, is that we, you know, continue to push for, you know, savings and stewardship of the middle school. I mean, I mean, I think we continue to push for it for Isaac, I mean, I know this, we're getting close now, I mean, this is, this is not the happiest report, 'cause it went up a little bit as opposed to them. But, you know, I know $800,000 in contingency's not a lot in, in the budget, but shucks, I mean, we can save 15,000 here and 25,000 here, I mean, all of a sudden you can, you can start getting some cash there as well. So, uh, I'm about trying to tighten it up everywhere where we can and, um, so that would be, that would be where I would be too, is to say, okay, let's, let's, knowing that both of them are still on the. knowing that both of them are still on the, on the plan, but the middle school's got a long way out, let's go forward like that, but let's work with the school board to help them find more savings and look at, but the operational savings as well as capital. I mean, I think, I think we shouldn't give up on that. I mean, I do, what the thing I do worry about, though, is with, with the time, with, it's just like this construction cost go up, I do worry about that number getting bigger. Not because, you know, but just because of construction costs going up, and we know that they will. So that's, that's the part that makes my stomach hurt the most, frankly.
It's almost like you still need a contractor while they're hungry.
Well, the other thing, too.
So, but I, there's no way we can figure that one. Well, I know folks have said with the initial plans for the middle school, there was a lot of duplication. They had a lot of things in it they didn't need as far as music and different rooms. So, and I, and I certainly don't want them to get the message, oh, yes, Isaac Dixon's on the thing, even though you came back with more money and have them think that the middle school's going to be that way. No, but what I'm saying is, because, you know, even though they came back with a bigger number and we said, they went up, I don't want that to be the message that we're sending. Oh, it's okay to go up.
Oh, yeah. And I will talk.
I don't think, there's, they are not getting that message, I can promise you. Based on four phone calls I've had today, they are not getting that message.
And I, and again, I don't think there's anything wrong with giving somebody enough, giving them a number and seeing if they can, can meet the need with a certain number. I don't, if they can't, they can. If they say they've tried that and they come back and said, hey, the closest we can get, we went from 21, we went back to 19, where we're actually able to do it at 19. I mean, you're just saying, still want to meet the need.
Okay, so the feedback that I get from people not in the city is that the city's not putting enough skin in the game for these schools. And I want to be able to justify, one, the need, and two, be able to say to them, no, they're, they're doing their part as well.
So can you, can you explain, okay, the county has Article 39. It's for the ill schools. Okay, can you explain what the city's funding source is for cap, for capital improvements? And how that works?
How big is the question?
You know, I was, you know, like I said, when I went to Isaac Dixon, I was a little concerned about maintenance, you know, and the difference between that and the school built at the same time. So I, I don't know how they, I just don't know how they, their, their funding source works.
Well, they have the same funding sources, but all of it's distributed based on the number of students or the average daily membership. And typically, both schools will look at what they expect to get, and they'll, they'll quote save based on what their expectations are, and then they'll, they'll invest in the projects. The Claxton was paid out of the school capital fund.
When was that?
It's just been 10 or 12 years ago.
Was that when we needed a bond, the, the school bond that they? No.
We used to have to do a bond to use the school capital funds. So it may have been, been at the time when we still had to sell the bond, even though we were paying for the district at source. That changed since I've been here. We project out for 20 years. You can have lottery funds, corporate income tax, which we call ADM funds, and I hate to call them the same thing, but we do. And then Article 39, sales tax. When it comes in, it's distributed based on number of students. And you can tell how much you're going to get. I mean, we've been through a down period of sales tax, but we think that that's leveled off and we're going back up. It's just that the county gets a lot more, so they can save and build a little bit faster than. And we have looked at the school capital fund for the city schools, and we will be able to pull the first debt service payment out of that for them. But we can only pull one payment, that's all, that's all they'll be able to make. We don't like for them to drop really low. We want them to keep a million, million and a half in there. If you have a really major problem, they've got to be able to fix it. I mean, the roof caves in somewhere, you've got to be able to repair the roof. And you can always go to school capital fund for that. So we don't let them draw it down to zero. Using the, at the point where we'll use the million, we'll use a million for out of their account, they will have about $5 million total in there to use.
In their capital.
In their capital. But what you've got is, a lot of schools have got some age on them. So that's, that's one reason it's a little more of a struggle for city schools to come up with the capital money.
How much did they save toward rebuilding these schools, the Nashville City School Board?
They haven't really saved anything.
Nothing?
No, I mean, they borrowed QSCAP bonds for the high school, when we had the stimulus money. I forgot that. And then there's been a couple of other Build America bonds that, that they've used, that they've used their school capital money for that. But if you, just out of their operating cost.
Because that's one of the complaints I've had, is the lack of anticipation for these needs. These are old needs, this is not a new problem.
It's, if, do you remember that, yeah, I mean, I think that's, I think it's a really fair question. But I think when you look at, they supplied us with what they've used for those, for Article 39 for the last 10 years, and you look at those line items, I mean, it's kind of impossible. It's like, how do you start saving for a new car when you're, you've still got to keep your old car running? You know, and in your, in your limits, your, your income stays the same or goes down proportionally. So, I mean, I.
Supplemental tax, by the way. You get that on top of every, that's more than the county gives.
Well, anyway, that's, that's kind of, I mean, anyway.
But I, but I, I mean, to your point, you said something, something like, purposefully, you know, when they brought these two schools to us, the first meeting, I said, well, I said, it's bigger than one meeting and bigger than two schools. You know, it's a, it's, it's. But I, what's the next school and the next school? You know, it's something that's, I don't know who deals with it, but it's something that's going to have to be dealt with.
I know.
That funding, that funding source is broken.
Exactly right.
It is broken.
Exactly right. What did you say, David, about raising the supplemental?
Well, it's just, it's just that there's supplemental, there's, there's money going to the C schools that the county schools don't get. They certainly, what's it, 15% of the students are city and 85 are county? So understand that the ADM, David, it's going to always be off. But at some point, the board has some responsibility to save the money.
But I think the board, well, but, but the board, but it's our responsibility to do school capital. I mean, that, the state legislature says county commissioners do school capital. That's your job. You know, the, the city schools, the supplemental taxes for additional operational. And you can, we can have an argument if they've used those the right way. But, but it's our job by a state statute to do capital for schools, for, for the schools, no matter where they are in our district.
No, I'm good for doing it. It's just real disturbing to me that Asheville Middle gets stuck starting way off because they didn't save money. And that's, they just, it seemed like they had a little bit more skin in the game. They could start earlier on both of them, but.
Well, I think that's fair. I mean, I think it's a fair thing, I think that's a fair thing to ask. Am I wrong?
I'm for schools, I just, you know, it seems like we just.
And I'm happy to go back to Alan and ask him if we, if we wanted X dollars a year, can you come up with it and how can you come up with it to do that? That, that's a real fair question to ask him.
And can we get this, is there a way, another angle for this evaluation to be asked?
Well, we've had, Alan and I have had some very serious discussions around that. There was a design put together and questions asked about, is this reasonable cost for this design? And I'm asking him to say, is this a reasonable design for the site? Because those, those could be two different answers. And, I mean, he hears me, they, but I don't have an answer back to that question. But I do think this question needs to be addressed. Is this the right design for the site?
If we get Dixon down, they had moved Middle up, so I'm, I'm just, I hate the kids in middle school.